I'll open the meeting at seven, I went to us back on, 7:30. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states in the record that this meeting is being recorded by more camp and may be recorded by other local media. If we could all stand for the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with board member reports. Christine, do you want to start?
I don't really have anything new to tell you.
Okay. Mr. Studo.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Wong, right?
Yeah, let's see, three things. One is, the forest committee had a chance to get together with the residents at the butters at Swan Pond to go over the Swan Pond Trails proposal. We had a distance learning lab about a week and a half ago. We had probably about thirty, forty people show up, pretty much all neighbors. We were also joined by a conservation committee, the town engineer, school committee was not there because I think had a bunch of meetings on the same night, but they've been in cooperation with us because conservation committee, school committee, and the town are all owners of this property. As you would expect when you start talking trails and access to people in the neighborhood, we're very concerned.
As you know.
Yeah, and they, you know, it's reasonable concern. We met for about two hours, we went through the map trails quite detailed. We get a lot of feedback from them about that. And I think by the end, I mean, I don't think, you never want a percent agreement, but I think at the end we came to kind of a visual understanding about why this project makes sense and how we can, what we can do on the trails to keep them from invading into their neighbors, you know, but still allow access to the town. Because the area is absolutely, and so having access is it. So, we are going to gather all our meeting notes, get back together with the consultant, and then probably like in June, we'll do another meeting where we'll again invite the butters in, show them the revised plans, and I think we'll get a lot more consensus about it. The concern always is, you know, people are imagining, you know, that if you open it up, you're going to have a lot of trash in there and things like that. The experience is that, by the way, they already have that. They have a significant amount of trash, they have closets running through there, you know, it's not being taken care of, it's not being used properly, and so they already have that now. This will actually change it around so that it's a, you know, it would be like other trails that we've seen, I don't know if they were walking trails, but my experience is when I go all over, is that you never see trash. The people that, you know, are there, they take care of it, and it's really pristine condition. So, we expect that to happen in those trails. So, anyways, I think we're on the right path. Girl scouts have already signed up, they want to help us out, the boy scouts want to help us out. Any equipment to be put into it would be just materials, and again, it's very, very low impact signage, things of that nature, a few bridges to get over some buttons and things like that. When I say bridges, I don't mean, you know, the four million other cars.
We get a nervous twitch when we say bridges.
You know, you lay out some timbers and you put some crust panels on and you're good to go. So, I think, I feel like it was actually a very good meeting, and I think it'll make good progress, and that will be an asset that we can offer for the town at a very reasonable low cost. And in the future, if they decide to expand more trails, they can do that, because we have a lot of different options on the table. So, that's one thing.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. The second thing is, man utilization committee came to me to ask about selling unused property parcels. I know we were starting to look at that before, we had sold a few, but we put it on hold due to some other issues that were going on. So, I'm just bringing it up as a potential new business thing. I'm going to kind of tell them to put it on hold for right now until we get back to them, but I think that that's something, you know, if it's, if it's no longer an issue of a number, then maybe we should reconsider that. But again, I don't know that. And they were in good spirits trying to say maybe this is a way to help out, get some money for the town to help offset some of the deficits we're having. So, good intentions, but I think we have to kind of redo that carefully for all the implications that, that exists. So, I plan to respond back to them. Please put it on hold, we've heard you, we'll come back to you, if that's okay, generally there.
Thank you.
All right. And then the third thing is tomorrow is voting day. You know, there's a few contested seats, and there's, there's some that are not. I would like to speak on behalf of myself, and I think I reflect on the board as well, is that Kate and Steve are both running. There's a third candidate. I think it's great that people come forward, we should always have contested races, it's a good thing to do. I will just say that having been on this board for five years, the makeup we have right now is very good, but what we bring to the table is very good. There's a lot of experience that Steve and Kate have that really lets us all make better decisions. And so, you know, my endorsement is to retain the group we have and keep it the same, because I think it's, it's in the best interest of the town that we do that. For the candidate that's running, anybody who runs for an office, especially when you're going for select board, I always encourage you to work your way through the committees, find your way, find your voice through the committees, and then come to the select board. Because I find that the amount of experience I've had, I'm older, you know, I tap into all of it when I've been sitting on this board. A lot of things come up, and you have to have some perspective, you have to have knowledge of the town. So, I encourage anybody who wants to run for the select board, next year you can run against me, you know, if I decide to run. But, you know, anybody who wants to run in any committee, I think it's really in your interest to work your way through. I got active, you know, being, I started, I mean, I came to town in 1992, I joined the Martin's Pond Association right away, took a lot of time for my career, but then over the last nineteen years, I really jumped in, and it's only been the last five years I've been on the select board. And I found that to be very useful. So, again, future candidates, come to the board with experience, be valuable, and, you know, whoever gets in tomorrow, we wish you luck. But, you know, again, I think Steve O'Leary and Kate Penfelly are senior people here, and we need them. And, you know, history and seniority actually matters when we talk about this stuff, because there's a lot of issues that go on. So, sorry if I blustered a little bit, but I just wanted to get those thoughts out there. And please go out and vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to thank you for those comments, and I should and meant to say this, but I'm tired. Mr. Matthews here, I think he's also run a phenomenal campaign, it's been, you know, he's been really upfront and direct, and there's no muddslinging, it's been a really well-run, I think, well-run campaign. I appreciate that, and thank you for that. And thank you for your kind words, too.
That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary?
Couple of things. One, the Board of Health has been working on, they were working with the Sustainability Committee in relation to the styrofoam bylaw that was proposed last October, then put off, and then put off through June. They're going to be embarking on public input over the summer months, along with outreach to the local businesses that are going to be impacted, potentially impacted by this, and then we'll have some sort of proposal by the end of the year that they could come up with. They generally embrace the concept of what was being proposed, and they're going to follow through with a significant amount of public input, public education, and then input from the businesses that are going to be impacted. So, I think all positive things that come out of that, that's great. Historic Commission, we chair the Historic Commission, the town administrator, Todd, we walked through, and fire chief walked through the Damon Tavern today, because the Historic Commission is looking to further define what their mission truly is, you know, and get it clarified and defined. And they're very excited about jumping back in and reactivating the group in hopes of actually raising some money and helping restore and reopen the Damon Tavern for more public access, and a lot of cosmetic work that needs to be done there. A lot of the remediation in relation to asbestos flooring, all that has all taken place, but it needs a lot of work, but it has a significant amount of potential, and it's a valuable resource that's underutilized right now, and I applaud Francine's effort and her group to take it on. And the administration is very amenable to helping them redefine themselves and find a mission, and nothing but good things are going to come from it. So, it's very positive. And I haven't been in there for quite a while, and it goes reminiscing again, you know, downstairs in the basement was the children's library when I was a kid, and then, which is now pretty much all cleared up. But it's a beautiful building, but it needs a lot of work, and a lot of attention, and we have a group now that's very interested in tackling it head-on. So, there's going to be a collaboration, and I know the administration's going to pull together the District Commission, Historical Commission, and the Historical Antiquarian Society, all together collectively put their minds together and create a plan of attack. So, all good. And just the other thing is, tomorrow is election day, I would urge everybody, please come out and vote, it's very important. Again, I appreciate your kind words, Rich, and I concur. Kate is a valuable resource to the board, and certainly his work taught him he's deserving of people's support. So, but again, to Mr. Matthews, again, congratulations on the campaign that you've run, I appreciate the sticking to the issues and not making it personal, because that hasn't always been the case, and you've run a very good campaign, and wish you luck. And if you happen to have the opportunity to sit here, value it, use it wisely. If you don't, there's plenty of opportunities to get involved, and we certainly would welcome that. So, again, please come out and vote tomorrow and participate. The good thing is, we're already 2,500 ballots mailed out by the clerk's office, so that's going to be unprecedented in relation to, hopefully, the turnout for a local election hasn't been that high in a long time. And I hope people that requested those ballots, use them. Be interested to see how many do. But, you know, come out, participate, the weather's going to be good, so that's not an excuse. Right, Mr. Studo, it's not going to be right out on their head?
Parking all day last year.
Every election day.
Fourteen hours, right?
The sun only shines on our, on our election days, right Kate? So, again, please participate, please come out, please be heard, and make your choices be heard. So, again, I appreciate the opportunity to have served here and served with all of you, and I look forward to serving some more if the votes are issues. Thank you very much.
The community impact team is having a mental health first aid for youth, it's free, on May 15th and May 22nd. It's a certification course, and you can, there's a light dinner included, so there you go, there's some ambition to go. You can find that information on North Reading CIT on social media and on the website. They have just so many things that go on, so many things that they offer, so it's worth looking at. Also, flags on the common, on Thursday, May 23rd, at 3 o'clock, the Veterans Committee will be planting a thousand flags on the common, and they ask anybody interested who would like to help and join in on that, to please come to the common and help do that. It's going to be a pretty cool thing to see, it's going to be nice. So, that's it for my board member reports, but I would like to wish everybody tomorrow the best of luck. You're lucky, you're going to have a beautiful day to stand out there. And I just want to personally say that it's been my honor to sit on this board with both of you. I've learned a lot from both of you, and I wish you best of luck. I'll be out later after work, because I don't have to take a takeoff. But really, truly, best of luck to everyone. Elections are the roar of our country, and, you know, everybody should get out there and cast your vote. All right. Public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? We have a brand-new microphone up there for you to talk to. Anybody on, Sue? No? All right. Then we'll move on to donation from Fit Revolution slash Hornet Hustle Road Race.
Madam Chair, through you, I think folks are aware of a road race that was held on Saturday morning a few weeks ago, here in town, put together by Fit Rev, Fit Revolution, resulted in $2,800 being raised for the fire department, which the department's looking to use to invest in some equipment for firefighter wellness. So, we're certainly grateful to the folks with Fit Rev for organizing the event and for those who participated in it. I know there was a photo opportunity at the fire department, the chief had some folks there for it, so there'll be a press release that is waiting for us to formally accept the donation, and my understating is that it'll be a piece of fitness equipment that will be secured, could be used in the station, used in a renovated station in the future as well, so to go to good long-term this.
Great.
And the motions have prepared.
You have a motion, Mr. Studo?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to accept the donation, the amount of $2,800 from Fit Rev Hornet Hustle Road Race on behalf of the fire department.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second by Mrs. Manu Penfelly. Any further discussion?
It's great, thanks.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Very much. I concur. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, before we get into the meat of some of this stuff, do you want to sign the annual town meeting warrant and the election warrant, so that Mr. Lab doesn't have to hang around until 10 o'clock?
You don't want to hang around until 10 o'clock? 10 o'clock, well, you're here.
I'm being optimistic.
You're being very optimistic.
There's nothing on TV right now.
No, not much on tonight, which is evidence play on the people that are tuning in this evening.
Yeah, I think we could start doing that.
Madam Chair, through you, there is a motion for the warrant, the version that is pending for signature reflected comment back from town council, probably most notably on the language for Article 16, the operating budget, which does and will include a series of appropriations that will both be, some of which will be underneath the Proposition Two and a Half limit, and a portion of which will be above and beyond that limit contingent on a ballot vote at a date to be determined, I think, on the next agenda item. We put in the packet a copy of the budget in the format that usually gets printed. We don't normally get to this level of detail, but just because of the significance of the matter being discussed, we wanted to just call out the formatting. I'm looking specifically on page 33 of the PDF. It should look like a familiar setup that gets printed in the annual town meeting budget. I will just note that we would be seeking the budget to be approved in two votes. First vote would be for funding in the column entitled Proposition Two and a Half Limit, and the second would be for a vote for the override amount, which would be contingent on a ballot vote after the annual town meeting, and that totals $2,085,227. And those totals are sprinkled throughout the departments where the funding is there, and that you'll find that, as you'll see in the hearing coming up, it matches the presentations that we've made with regard to what the budget recommendation would be going forward. So, again, we don't normally go to that level of detail at this stage of the process, just to get support and to call it out to your attention. The finance director's gone to the effort to try to get it close to final, for you to see it in its draft form. We're sort of putting the cart before the horse, because we haven't had the budget hearing yet, but that's what the format would look like if we make any changes, and we'll certainly make the adjustments before it gets printed, which won't be until Friday. We expect to get some recommendations from the finance committee on a series of warrant articles from their meeting this week, so we'll incorporate those in like we normally do. I think that's really all I wanted to share with regard to the warrant. We generally separately have a discussion about the articles and our recommendations, and we've put those motions in the packet, we can do that later on.
Okay.
I guess maybe the only other thing, because it's, there's been quite a bit of discussion on it, we do have an article on there, as has been discussed, I'm talking about Article 18, which is on page 56. It's the home rule petition to establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption. And it's in a format that's pretty similar to the Town of Reading's program, I believe.
Which article is it?
It's Article 18, or page 56 of the PDF. So, it's in a pretty similar format to, I think, what you've seen before, it's been reviewed by town council. Again, it is a home petition, so it would not only need to be approved by the town, but it would need to go to the legislature and be approved at the legislative level as well. I think we had hoped to have a more extensive discussion about the article with the assessor here, unfortunately, he's not able to be with us this evening, but I just want to just call everyone's attention, it's still on there as we discussed at the last, the last meeting, and it's been reviewed by town council. I think those are the major points, Miss Gallo.
So, I'm not sure what we're voting on first.
Number 11.
Number 11.
Number 11.
Which would be only to sign the warrant with the articles that you see on there.
Are my colleagues all comfortable with this, or do you want to take it in order?
No, I'm fine with it, I am.
The five is prior to the other tax.
I would say.
Budget is first.
Yeah.
Gender item number 11.
You're talking about the article, right?
No, he's talking about the motion.
Go from eight to nine, from eight to 13.
This is Gil Verdom?
Yes.
Madam Chair, while we're looking for that, can you just again walk us through the budget? The regular budget needs a vote, no approval. The amended budget with the override that gets voted?
The additional appropriations.
For the additional?
Because we want.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Whether it's a yes or no, we have the article on about the special election on June 18th for that.
Correct.
Because it has to go to a ballot. If it's a no at the town meeting, it still goes to the ballot?
That's correct, yes.
If it's a yes at the ballot, it goes back to another town meeting?
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry.
So, if it's, the regular operating budget is approved, the amended budget with the override is considered. If it's a no at the town meeting, we're still, we may not have the election, people don't know, because that's the next article, right?
So, there, the only, there's one article for the omnibus annual operating budget, it would be considered in two motions, one for the portion within Proposition Two and a Half, and one for the portion that would be above Proposition Two and a Half. Whether or not, so the first one, we certainly hope passes, because that's necessary to operate town government, that's at July 1st. The second one is the override contingent portion. Whether it passes or fails, that second portion, there will be a valid election, because it will have already been called by the select board, presumably for June 18th, as recommended by the town clerk. If the override portion passes and the ballot vote on the 18th passes, then the override has been approved, and the amount appropriated would be roughly $2,800,000 out of the $10, 000 that we've been talking about.
But it's just this fiscal?
Just this fiscal year, that's correct, it's May 25. If the override portion of funding, the second motion on the budget fails at town meeting, we'll still have an override election, and if it passes at that override election, we still have the ability to return to town meeting before the tax rate is set in the fall to appropriate the funds that were called for within the override portion. So, we've checked kind of multiple different ways with town council on this question, because there's a primer out there that doesn't explicitly say it, but it's been pretty clear that in the way that we're proceeding with this, even with the contingency, the Proposition Two and a Half contingency, say, new appropriation, we have the ability, we so chose, and again, that would be town meeting's decision, we would be able to go back and seek an approval. So, that could be a summer town meeting, if that's what folks wanted to do, it could be at the October annual town meeting as well, it could be at any point, up until when the tax rate is set, which is usually in the fall.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to sign the June 10, 2020, for spring annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You have a motion?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to schedule a special election for Proposition Two and a Half override for June 18th, 2024, and assign the attached special election warrant.
Second.
The motion I have is second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I got sidetracked for the question. Were the vote taken on the warrant?
Yes.
Okay, so, in case, I didn't, it wasn't brought up, but it came up in the last meeting. So, the town clerk is going to be consulting with the board of registrars, and we expect a recommendation for early, early in-person voting coming from them, and when that happens, he'll come to the select board, and we'll consider whether or not he wants to do that. But that's a necessary.
For the special election?
For the special election, the June 18th election.
It has to be at her recommendation.
Yeah, she's, that's her recommendation, she needs the second registrar to agree with her, move for that recommendation to come to the select board, and at that point we can consider it, but we are expecting a favorable recommendation of that. It's not official, but we expect the voting would be the five business days the week before, which is the week of the town meeting, and the Saturday before the town meeting. But once that's all determined by folks, we'll get that all publicized.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. No. It's a little bit. 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 Does it pick up whispers?
I'm in fact, I'm in fact.
Press that button and tell me. I will caution you. I can tell. So, we move on? Bond anticipation notes and bonds.
Madam Chair, through you, we are joined by the finance director and town treasurer, who can give you a brief update. Most importantly, we have an abbreviated motion that can be read rather than the very lengthy motion, which you have picked two of them, right? One for the debt service being paid by the surplus, and one for the borrowing itself. It's a routine thing that we do every year, but I do think it's important to know that once again, movies has sustained our bond rating at AA2, and there were some indicators that, you know, some of the trends are favorable for potential consideration for an upgrade in the future. So, that's all good news for us, you know, we talked openly in a meeting call with them about the challenges that we're facing financially, and about the fact that town meeting and the voters will be considering an override, and they certainly understood the situation, you know, that we were in, and it's not common based on what they hear from their clients. So, that's certainly all good news. But the business before you is to basically sign off on the borrowing, or the temporary borrowing for a series of things. There were three to Miranda from the town treasurer with, I think, their bid results. We award to a low bidder for each of those three categories. I'll turn over the town president.
Yes. Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. So we have two bans. One of the bans is for the high school, middle school, and then that's a year ban. And then we have a ban for the Mill Street property, the land acquisition. But that one, we only took out for six months. And then we have the bonds, which is the permanent borrowing. So for the ban for the high school, we received four bids. The lowest bidder was Fidelity Capital Markets at 3.7767. That ban is for $4,288,577. The next bidder was TD Securities, and that was at 3.8870. And then BNY Mellon Capital at 3.9968, and then Oppenheimer was at 3.9984. So these bans will come due next May. And then we did get a small premium on that too as well for a little over 20,000.
Thank you very much.
Yep. And then the Mill Street property, we had two bids for. That ban, that's a six-month ban, and that was for 578,000 is the amount we're banning. Newburyport Five Savings Bank was the lowest bidder at 6.7500, and then Oppenheimer was at 6.8649. So that's a six-month ban, so that will come due in November. Right? Yeah, November, so. And then we have the bonds. We haven't borrowed permanently for a few years, so this is approximately three years, 2021, '22, and '23 capital projects. The ban is for $5,655. We did receive a premium of 294,000. TD Securities was the lowest bidder at 3.909764. Fidelity was at 3.319261. Roosevelt and Cross was at 3.32113. Bancroft was at 3.389371, and Robert and Byrd was at 3.435807. And that's a permanent ban, a permanent bond, excuse me.
Permanent bond?
Yes.
Can you explain that to me?
Oh, okay. So all our capital projects that the town has voted on for us to borrow for, we go out to bid on the bonds and we, it's kind of like a mortgage. They give us the money, and then we go out and use the money to finish the projects that we've voted, that the town has voted on. So they go anywhere from five years to 30 years. So it just depends on the portion and what we borrowed for.
So when you say permanent as opposed to what?
The bans is a ban anticipation note where it's just usually a one-year that we borrow for. This is permanent, so.
It gives you an extended time?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Madam Chair, I move to approve the votes of the board as prepared by Bond Council to the town and presented to this meeting, which votes, among other things, formally award the notes lower bidder to have a competitive sale held on April 30th, 2024, and establish the terms thereof. The formal terms of the votes prepared by Bond Council to the town and approved by this motion shall be incorporated in the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none? We don't have to read the votes?
Apparently not.
By reference?
Michael, wait.
By reference?
We don't have to read all the details.
No, we don't, but we are going to have to incorporate them into the meeting. So that lengthy document with all of the financial figures would get incorporated in the minutes. I think we asked three different times to confirm that with Bond Council. That's what they told us.
We incorporate firm reference. Okay. You're off the hook.
And then continuing, thank you.
Wait, I didn't take the vote. Second.
Oh, I thought you did.
No, I didn't take the vote. There was, that was discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Jump ahead. Madam Chair, in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, the amounts set forth in the schedule attached to this vote in the column entitled 2024 Current Balance, each of which is less than $50,000 and represents surplus funds filed upon the projects described therein that have been completed and for which no further liability remains, are hereby transferred to the town's debt service budget line payable.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Remaining proceeds of prior bond authorizations.
You just took the vote.
You just took the vote.
That was that.
Well done, Madam Chair.
Fabulous.
I do want to recognize the work of the Finance Director and the Staff and Finance Office to consult with department heads and identify these projects. Some will go back a long ways, with 2009, I think was the old thing. But we do a lot of county housekeeping and cleanup here. The funds that you just voted are going to go to pay some of our debt service for this current fiscal year. It's a one-time funding source, obviously, because you're, you're, it goes out a whole bunch of projects over 15 years span, but you can't do that every year. But it will generate some free cash because that money we budgeted that we now won't have to spend will be left in the budget and will become available for us in the fall as we're learning every, every dollar.
Thank you. All right. So we are, Madam Chair, yes? Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like me to wait for those until you sign them?
Would you like to wait for them?
You're going to sign them? Sure.
If you would like to wait for them.
Okay.
Thank you. She's making sure you sign.
You skipped me. That's it. This is your out box. Here. In. Permanent mute.
It's completed. All right, those are signed, right?
No, those aren't new. All that's on the floor. Caden's behind. No. No. Those are none yet. The ones to her right are none.
Like I'm getting a mortgage.
You are.
I am.
Yeah. A lot of borrowing. Just a case. Pretty. Another one. What's this one? This one I like. I signed every one. What's up? These are unsigned. You still have to sign.
Part of the first, part of the second.
Yep. Should I sign this?
These you have.
Oh, okay. I want to see if these are like, oh, like the market.
Did we do this last year?
Yes. It's every year.
They're stapled up. They're coming apart.
Scott, I didn't do this.
Well, who did this?
Mary, who told you? This is her job. It's her. I didn't even get these until she didn't brought them in here.
I know.
She probably has scanned them all. That's why they're not stapled.
That's it? Why can't I? I'll pay for it with my own money. I understand the warranty.
Laser piece?
No, just.
All scanned.
Yeah, old school. Probably mine. You can't read it. No, it's not a, we're not though. Hey. Look, we're not. You just remember, we did these.
No, but it's a tape recorder.
We did these. We're ahead of the game. We did some already. I'm just saying.
Madam Chair, through you, I believe there's a hearing notice for the budget. Oh. Through you, I believe there's a hearing notice for the budget hearing that needs to be read. If that's where, that's where we're at now.
Is it after all the motion? Page 20, page 30. So mine doesn't show me the page. Do you want me to read it? Oh, I've got it. Thank you. Town of North Reading Notice of Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Informational Hearing. The North Reading Select Board does hereby notify the residents of the Town of North Reading that an in-person and virtual informational hearing on the fiscal year 2025 target for the Town of North Reading, anticipated to be considered at the spring annual town meeting on Monday, June 10th, 2024, will be held on Monday, May 6th, 2024, at 8:00 p.m., Room 14, Town Hall, 235 North Street, and via Zoom technology. It is anticipated that the recommended FY 2025 budget will include funding that is contingent on a Proposition Two and a Half override tax increase. The hearing may be accessed virtually as follows.
That's it, Madam Chair? Thank you. So we are here for the annual operating budget hearing. Obviously, we're in a unique year where we're talking about and submitting to town meeting a portion of the budget that's override contingent. So we tried to merge all of that into one presentation here that we'll try to go through fairly quickly. I'll try not to read every slide, which I sometimes do. Again, just about the town budget process, bottom line is where we end up at generally is a reflection of the work of a collaboration of the financial planning team, which has represented a extremely select board, the school committee, finance committee, as well as school and town hall administration. As I've mentioned in a couple of forums, the numbers change over a multiple month period. So if you see one number and now it looks a little bit different, that's part of that evolutionary process, and we reviewed the numbers that led to this hearing and this presentation with the finance, financial planning team on Friday at a meeting. So that's what we think is roughly the final version, or what will be submitted to warrant as a final version. We've been talking about budget challenges specifically, the fact that the most stable form of our revenue, property taxes, accounts for $58.5 million out of a total of $82.7 million in general fund expenditures. There's other revenue sources, departmental revenue, state aid, investment income, and something that was not included last time, debt exclusion power revenue as well. So that all pushes the number up to a larger number than what folks are seeing. That's not actually reflecting any increase in what we're spending. We're just trying to more accurately reflect how much is, how much is going on in the general fund budget. We've talked about our long-term projections, looking back over a 20-year period and then trying to project that forward. Our fixed costs, health insurance, assessments on debt, for example, increased 5% on average in the year. Municipal department expenditures, 3.3%, and school department expenses, roughly 4.1% on average per year. New growth has been a stabilizing force. We're talking specifically about construction, whether it be subdivisions in the 1990s, construction of the Edward Apartments, the JT Berry property on Lower Road in the 2000s, and now the construction of Martin's Avenue at JT Berry property over the past few years. Our conservative budgeting has allowed us to generate some free cash that's left over from one year to be used to stabilize the budget for next year. from one year to be used to stabilize the budget for next year. Our ability to do that is coming to an end, and it's putting pressure on the budget and would be forced to reduce new amount that's available in departmental budgets, putting pressure on services. These are some slides that we've all seen a few times now, showing the projections over a 20-year period. New to this is showing what happens when you overlay the proposed proposition two and a half override. That blue line that you see now shows that we start to make up for what our expenses look like. You see that for a number of years, that blue line exceeds the requests that we think we need. And the reason for that is this is just showing a projection for the school and municipal costs at 2.5% per year increases, which we know is not the reality of what we see when we look back over that 20-year period. It's more like this, the 3.3% to 4.1% increase per year. So, you see, we get ahead of it over the first few years, but then we begin to have challenges in the out years. We've talked openly, we talked about how long we'd like an override to last. How long it lasts is directly related to how much the override is, based on the financial projections that we have. The number that's been identified is a total of $10 million. Those increases to be phased in over a three-year period. They are permanent, meaning that they would continue forward after that 10-year period at that number, and they would grow over that 2.5% margin each year as the rest of the tax levy does. I know this spreadsheet is pretty small, just sort of showing some of the data that we're working off of here, showing the deficits and the various categories. This spreadsheet, at least in the most recent version, is up on the town's website, I think in that presentation right, Lorian. So, folks can't see it here. This will be put up, but it's also already up online on the Budget Central website. You know, just a note, as we've talked, we've seen this coming for a couple of years, probably specifically talking with town meeting about the challenges that we expected to experience in the budget this year, a year ago at town meeting, and identifying that there would be difficult decisions to be made with regard to services. So, our goals in the budget process are to continue that collaboration, the financial planning team, to the extent possible, maintaining our service levels, where necessary modified services, incorporating multiple funding streams to get the budget balance for town meeting, and this year, develop a scenario that maintains services relying on a proposition two and a half override. Supply chart you've seen in the past, Lorian's added into this, the red slice shows the deficit. So, without proposition two and a half override, it's roughly, the budget's roughly $2 million less, and we'll talk a little bit about what that looks like for departmental expenses in the next slides. Not going to spend too much time talking about the public schools, but you know, between the non-override and override budget, the non-override budget shows roughly 3.9% increase compared to last year, but it requires a reduction of our projected 15.2 full-time equivalent positions. The override portion of the budget would result in an addition of approximately four full-time equivalent positions, preserve roughly $1.2 million of reductions that would otherwise have to happen in the budget for the next fiscal year, and they're listed below in that chart. I'm not going to read all this, but these are the implications for the school budget, comparing fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2025 in a non-override situation and an override situation. The biggest thing to highlight is, in a scenario where the budget is approved, but there is no override, they are projecting the elimination of 15.2 visiting positions. So, again, that could have an impact, including higher class sizes, higher student teacher case load at all levels, and a series of other impacts. I think more than anything, this is a pretend, and I want to make folks aware of our potentially at stake, and I'll talk more about municipal departments in just a moment. This shows a delineation of what the reductions might look like, those 15.2 full-time equivalent positions totaling the $1.2 million. You see they're spread out from elementary school classroom, elementary classroom teachers, middle high school classroom, and special ed teachers, nursing services, technology, academic support, custodial, general classroom kindergarten support, and a series of other items that are costs, not necessarily full-time equivalent positions, but are impacts that we certainly want folks to be aware of. School department, they put a projection out for it. I'm not going to focus too much on this, but it gets worse in the fiscal years after fiscal year 2025 in the budget scenario. And this listing shows you some of the things that are at stake with regard to the budget and its current status, and also how those services can be sustained and enhanced in an override scenario. The municipal budget, you've, I think, all seen this spreadsheet in the past. We had $20.23 million available, $21.275 million requests for municipal budgets. These reductions, same reduction listing that I think we've shown in every prior iteration, going first to the vacant positions in the areas where we generate free cash in order to balance the budget. That list totals $1,091,390 in reductions from the departmental request in order to balance and get to a municipal budget of $20,23,859. The impacts, many of the reductions in the slide don't have a direct noticeable impact in the first fiscal year for residents, but that $341,714 in reductions, that's basically generating free cash, is projected to have a direct impact on services in the next fiscal year. That's funding that we would not materialize as having left over to carry us into the following year, and there is likely to be an impact on services. What exactly that look like is hard to tell. It could be positions, it could be, in fact, a small department, depending upon the situation, but the impacts are expected to be significant. Again, not necessarily in fiscal year 25, where it's more, where it's more, where there's more of a short-term impact for the schools, but that second year is an impact in the municipal budget. So, we talked about our options. We could make reductions in services, potentially our capital investments to match our forecasted revenue, or, as has been proposed by the financial planning team, increase property tax revenue in the form of a proposition two and a half override. So, the slide that we've gone through, you know, you have $10 million is the number that was identified, showing it over to the resulting revenue over a couple of years. It increases because of the 2.5% growth factor. So, you see, we've actually counted to carry a larger number as that revenue grows. It's probably the most significant thing that we've shown people this slide, to try to really summarize what we're talking about. Out of that $10 million, $8.2 million of it is to maintain existing school and municipal services and the town's sound financial position. And roughly $1.7 million of it is for future capital needs, new municipal and new school initiatives. So, a significant portion of that $10 million is tied to supporting the town's solid financial standing and services that our residents all benefit from today, both school and municipal. The override, and we've talked about it in the impacts of, on a single-family home, which the average single-family home valued at $812,000. That home would see approximately a $250 annual tax increase without an override. That's what's allowed under the limits of proposition two and a half. Number changes in accordance with the market, individual home improvements, and the overall town property valuation, those all can have an impact on what the exact number ends up being. When we look at what the impact is of a proposed override, that $812,000 home would see a total of $1,721 in additional tax increase that would be phased in over a three-year period. After that third year, that override does remain in place in future fiscal years as well. Total impact on the tax rate is $2.12 per $1,000. So, if you're trying to figure out for your home, go to, you know, figure out, you know, pull up what the assessed value is. It's not Zillow, it's not Realtor.com. It's the assessed value that the town has. You want to divide by 1,000 and multiply by $2.12. Divide by 1,000 and multiply by $2.12. Important note, in the absence of an operating override, this $10 million, the debt for Chestnut and Borough's culverts, as well as the ladder truck that needs to be replaced, are likely to need to be funded through a debt exclusion tax increase anyway, which could be assumed as a fall. Those are critical needs that we're not able to absorb within our existing tax levy. This is an estimated impact on the tax bill over the three years. Again, it totals roughly $1,400 for our, maintaining our existing services and our sound financial position. Roughly $325 of it is for additional school, municipal, and capital costs. And we show a phasing here that projects roughly $495 in an increase in the first year, fiscal year 2025, $682 in the second year, and $552 in the third year. That's the phasing that we've been talking about.
Could you just back up one side? Sorry. One more. Will you say this, just for clarification purposes? Approximately $250 for an annual tax increase of 2.5. Is that an additional $1,700, or is it $750 over three years, $250 year for three years, included in the $1,700?
It's additional.
It's additional. I just wanted to be sure that people understand that that's an additional amount.
That's a great question. It is in addition to that $250. That's correct. We've had, you know, some conversation about cash on hand. This came up as recently as the January special town meeting. We do have a number of funding sources that the town has that are important considerations when our bond rating is provided. And again, for those who don't know, our bond rating is the equivalent of the town's credit rating. If you were the town or a person, that would be its credit rating, and it would be a pretty good rating. We have a number of different cash reserves that are out there. Some of them are restricted, and they're used to the purpose that's listed there. Others are, if relied upon to balance the operating budget in a particular year, could jeopardize our bond rating in the eyes of the rating agencies, who have really tried to shy away from that. We've been able to make it work by using that free, using savings in the form of free cash that's been left over from previous years to roll forward into the next year and stabilize the budget. But as we've identified, we project that that is running out as a potential option as we stretch budgets to be balanced. So, again, I've just talked about why, why not use these other available funds. Many of them are restricted on our bond rating. So, next steps for voters and residents who are watching, our annual town meeting is Monday, June 10th. Registered voters who attend will be asked to vote on a fiscal year 2025 budget that's expected to include a balanced budget with reductions and mentioned in the previous slides, as well as a portion that's contingent on the proposition two and a half override. That override would take place in a ballot vote on June 18th, in accordance with the vote that was just taken by the select board, with early voting expected to be the week before during the day here in town hall, business hours 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday to Thursday, Friday 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and then the Saturday prior, Saturday, June 8th. It would also be open, I think, in the morning for voting as well. We've put all that up with the town clerk, now that the warrant's been signed. We're going to have an in-person information session on this matter. Presentation is pretty similar, it's a little bit longer than this one, but it'll be Thursday night, May 9th, at 7:30 p.m. from the distance learning lab. And as has been the case for the past two or so months, we have all of the fiscal year 2025 budget information posted online at www.northreadingma.gov. There's a red link right on the front that says fiscal year 2025, Budget Central. We urge folks to click on that and take a look, run through the most recent budget updates, all of the departmental requests as well, and all the presentations that were reviewed here. So, it is all there. And that concludes the presentation. I do see at least one question coming in on the chat when we get to that.
Before I take questions from the public, I will ask my colleagues if they have any questions. The finance team, the finance committee is joining us. Mrs. Herbert and Mr. Kelleher, do you have any questions? Anyone in the audience?
Yes.
If you could come up and state your name and your address.
Jeff Simons, 31 Hickory Lane. Picking up on Steve's question, and then also the portion of the projected override vote that would be for the expenses that we expect, Borough's Road, Chestnut Bridge, Fire Truck. So, I misunderstood, and I think, Steve, your question clarified my answer. So, the $250-ish prop two and a half override increase that we see every year, that's not included in the $1,700, that would be in addition.
That's correct.
Each year? Okay. What figures did you?
Jeff, the $1,700 would be cumulative.
Correct.
Over three years.
Yes.
So, in year one, you're going to have your regular $250.
Right.
And then in year one, likely proposing the increase to be how much? $455,200?
There was a slide that had it added up there.
Yeah. $495. $682 in the next year.
Right, $682 and then $553. So, it's cumulative.
Correct.
For the $1,700. So, for the first year, it's the $250 plus $495.
Right.
The second year, it's that carry forward, $683 plus the $250.
Right. So, cumulatively then, it could be more like $750 plus inflation to $1,000 more at the end of the three-year period that the total tax bill got up on a median price home. Did I understand that correctly? $250 per year for three years.
Without any override vote. Without any override, that would happen.
Or even with the override vote. Because you're saying you did not include that $250 per year, the proper two and a half override normal vote, that's not included. So, you're looking at $1,700 plus another.
Plus $750.
$750. That would be the total of that.
At the end of three years.
Right.
That's what you're facing.
Right.
Twenty, $2,500.
In terms of understanding it to.
Twenty, $2,500.
Explain to people what their out-of-pocket cost would be.
So, at the end of year three, it's $2,500.
Right. But there is a factor in there for some override vote that is included here that we may hopefully approve anyway, the bridges, the culvert, the fire truck. About rough numbers, what did you estimate to be that would probably be paying in?
If this fails.
The debt exclusion.
If the debt exclusion vote fails.
Right.
We'll be coming back to fund the capital projects.
But those projects were included in the.
Those three, right.
Were included in the override vote. So, I'm trying to get at, let's just, if someone from the public assumes that we would approve those three projects, I'm trying to net out.
How much would they be if we just went for those three? If so, if this failed and we went to borrow?
That's only if, if the.
But if it passes.
Then it's already in there.
Those costs are included already in that, in that number.
Yes.
So, what I'm trying to get at is to the public, how much, you know, subtract off those three projects from this number, because let's assume that that's going to happen.
That it would fail.
The culverts have to be fixed, and we need to do ladder truck. It can't be done within the regular operating. I just say you're going to be asked for a debt exclusion.
Right.
What does the debt exclusion amount look like for those three?
Right.
To the finance director, please.
Because the top line here, the $1,250,000 is the debt service annual on those three projects.
But I'm trying to subtract out just the piece.
That's just.
That you estimated to include in the override vote. That's the net number is for P5, right?
Yeah, the $1,250, that the fixed cost portion is the $3,850, so you subtract the $1,250 is what was due to those projects, those.
Yeah, 212, roughly. We'll just do math. I mean. So, the 1.25 is roughly, just to do easy math, if I'm doing, out of the 10 million, it's 12.5%. So, 12.5% of $1,700, you get to roughly 212. I'm doing really, just to try to give you an average number.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I would suggest doing the math on that one for people to, so they understand that, that, you know, we assume that these are projects that the public is funding.
$220 bucks.
Yeah. So, their back comes off.
If we did it this way though, but I have a question, and maybe Mr. Kelleher, because you're, when we go, if you borrowed though, right, would it be under, this is a perpetual, right? That 212 would be in a perpetual. If we borrowed it, wouldn't the number be higher because it wouldn't be perpetual, or would it still, like, how long could we go on the borrowing?
You'd borrow it for the same term.
Okay.
Whether it's, whether it's debt exclusion or if it is, then it's, the term, the term would be the same.
Okay.
The borrowing terms would be the same, that's correct. The difference being, under the override, as proposed, the funding continues on after the borrowing has been completed. the borrowing has been completed. And I think the thinking of the financial planning team was, we expect that the other capital needs that could come up at that point in time. If we were going with a debt exclusion, the increase is only tied to the project borrowing term itself. So for a 20-year term to pay back for a bridge, it would go away at the 20 years, period end, rather than being carried through.
Yeah. Well, my suggestion would be, having had a little experience with Prop 2 and 1/2 override focused in the past, is have that, be prepared to explain that, because in a sense, the number just happens to work out, is it's important for people to get that the Prop 2 and 1/2 override, 250 a year is on top of this, but then coincidentally, that number is around low cost of the three projects. So the net result is back to the 1,700 or so. I think you would anticipate that question, just to give people full disclosure, and it's good to let people know that that impact is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? All right. You did, you said.
Yep, there was a question through the chat asking which positions are being eliminated from the school budget, teachers or senior positions. So I'm just going to refer back to the slide that the school department.
Is that person, their name, have they stated their name and address?
I believe they have. Just came through as Lisa.
Just for further, if anyone else has a question on Zoom, if they could state their name and address.
So this slide, I think, gives the breakdown, reduction of elementary classroom teachers, 3.0 full-time positions, reduction of middle school, high school classroom and special ed teachers, 6.0, reduction of district school nursing services, 0.5, reduction of technology staffing and support, 0.5, reduction of academic support tutors, elementary level, 1.2, reduction of custodial cleaning staff, 1.0, reduction of general classroom kindergarten support, 3.0 full-time equivalent positions. Oh, and she wrote Lisa Maki, 18 out of 18. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Lisa.
She said her husband here.
Yeah. He's in the audience.
To be here, to be here live. She was just, and she's checking to see if you show up on film.
He's here.
He's here, Lisa.
Can I see any other questions?
Nobody else?
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, of course.
Just, anybody know how many teachers we have, you know, like, on this whole category? There's one of those teachers here. How much is total staff? If anybody knows the answer to that question. Like, what percentage is it 15%? 15. If you don't know the answer, I'd just.
We have a lot of front of budget.
Yeah, teaching staff, I don't mind.
Yeah. Thank you.
What's the total, 500 or something?
Townwide.
Yeah. Is it, how many W2s, like six, six something for the issue?
Yeah, with some of them really part-time.
Yeah.
That number I have in my head, a full-time person was like around 300 for the schools, but I got that.
All right. So if there are no more questions from my colleagues or from the audience, we will close.
Yeah. See, I just find it interesting that as we're talking about this, this is the informational hearing on the budget, the lack of participation and, and I don't want to say lack of.
Should I check social media?
I don't want to say.
No, there's no one, nothing.
There's a significant amount of interest out there. It just, to become well informed.
Go Bruins.
Now is the time to ask your questions, be present, either through Zoom or here, ask your questions and get an answer.
Don't tell the same people.
Yeah, no, rather than rely on.
Which is why we probably don't need Zoom anymore.
Yeah. Rather than.
We want to revisit that.
Rather than relying on social media, you're not the full story. But again, there's going to be other opportunities. What is it, May night?
This Thursday, May 9th.
This Thursday, May 9th, so.
It's a very tight timeline to get educated.
Right. And then. We have a town meeting one month later.
A weekend, a day after a town meeting is passing by.
Another month. So anyway, hopefully more people participate.
And we do have, yeah, Thursday night, we have a.
And Madam Chair, through, we had a webinar.
Yes, we did.
Two Wednesdays ago. We did have 150 people at one point sign on there. I mean, it was a great turnout.
It's great.
Think they really liked the format where it wasn't a meeting, could not be worried about coming to a hearing, they could come in, listen, ask their questions, we answered their questions, and that was.
And what time was that held at?
It was at 8:00 p.m.
8:00 p.m.
Yeah.
Okay. That's true.
And then we'll be doing one, we'll be doing a day one, correct?
There was discussion about doing at least one in the daytime, doing another one as a webinar format, you know, just because of the response we got. So there will be more outreach that we'll push out once the dates are confirmed. But the next opportunity in person is this Thursday, May 9th.
Yeah. So we are trying to cover different times of day and different nights and different formats to try and make it available to everybody.
And we do have a vote that was prepared, and I know there, unfortunately, this one, there are a lot of numbers on it in a table. This would be the outcome of the informational hearing with the budget to be recommended for town meeting. Again, to be clear, two components, one within the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2 and one contingent on override. And it is, it is motion number 10.
I just said, I have a question that somebody texted to me, so I'm going to ask it. They want to know if this raises residential rate, what happens with commercial rates?
Thank you. It's a great question. So we have a, we've traditionally had a single tax rate. So this would be an across-the-board increase on the tax rate as a whole. So it would apply to commercial, commercial, industrial, and personal property as well. There is the possibility of shifting the burden at tax classification. It's like what's not traditionally done that. And the reason for that is because of the relatively low proportion of the tax base that our CIP, commercial, domestic, personal property represents at about 11 or 12%. But this would apply across the board to all properties.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we have.
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to recommend fiscal year 2025 operating budget from the following amounts as presented by the town administrator. Municipal, for the property 2 and 1/2 limit, would be $19,732,925, with an override of $520,214, for a total Prop 2 and 1/2 override of $20,233,139. For the schools, 38, Prop 2 and 1/2 limit would be $38,772,128, with an override of $1,436,318, for a total of $40,284,46. For the fixed cost, Prop 2 and 1/2 limit would be $25,403,093, with an override of $74,895, with a total Prop 2 and 1/2 override of $25,477,988. And with enterprises, $7,838,109, with an override of $53,800, with a total Prop 2 and 1/2 override of $7,891,999. For a total of a Prop 2 and 1/2 limit of $91,746,255, with an override total of $2,85,227, for a total Prop 2 and 1/2 and override of $93,831,482.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second from Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Just to give clarification for the public, what we're looking for for an override amount for year one is not $10 million, is $2,852,277 for year one.
Anything else? All right. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we will move on to the review of the June town meeting warrant articles.
Okay. Madam Chair, through you, this is where we customarily will go through, and the board has the opportunity to vote warrant article recommendations, which could be included in the printed warrant to be mailed to all residents. I will, the best I can do is share the screen with the warrant and then, Gloria, can I just kind of refer to you for the dollar amounts of different articles to the extent that you have? That might be the fastest way to do it.
Cause it's not like that.
To be clear, this is not a warrant article hearing. That will be on Monday, May 20th. This is purely just to give the board an update. For those who are watching, they can certainly hear the update as well and vote the recommendations on the 34 articles in the warrant. Mr. Wong, I don't know if you want to follow along with the warrant articles as I go through them. I tried to bold what our recommendation was at this point so that you can make the motion for it. So Article 1, customary fiscal year 2024 budget amendment. There likely will be budget amendments that will come forth in time for town meeting. So I think we're proposing to recommend that at town meeting.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article 1, fiscal year 2024 budget amendment.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, through you, Article 2 is the capital budget amendment, which at this point, I don't think we are projecting any amendments, but if something does come up, we'll certainly bring it to the board either on the 20th or the evening at town meeting for a vote. So we put it there as a housekeeping option. I believe the recommendation was to recommend.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article 2, fiscal year 2024 capital budget amendment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, through you, Article 3, funding the fiscal year 2024 snow and ice deficit. Through you to the finance director, a current working member.
$239,000.
Great. That's to be funded.
From free cash.
From free cash. Great. I believe we had to recommend that.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 3, fiscal year 2024 snow and ice deficit.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Article 4, appropriating funds to the capital improvement stabilization fund. We are recommending a transfer through you to the finance director.
Right now, it's a $1,305,552.
I believe the recommendation was to recommend.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 4, fiscal year 2024, appropriate funds to capital improvement stabilization fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
From free cash?
Oh, yes. Sorry, yes.
All in favor?
Aye. Article 6, to appropriate funds to the stabilization. Does that skip one?
Five.
Five, sorry. Article 5, transferring funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. There will be a later transfer into that account through raisin appropriate, but we are not recommending, recommending a transfer in this current fiscal year. We already made a transfer at the beginning of the fiscal year through raisin appropriate like we customarily do. So I believe our recommendation was to recommend a town meeting.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article 5, fiscal year 2024, appropriate funds to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Why, we're just wanting to pass on, recommend passing over.
I think, I think we could recommend passing over at this point. Right now, if I could change that.
Yeah, we're not going to take any action.
So the recommendation would be recommend passing over. Okay, you want to take that vote now?
Let's try that again. Madam Chair, I move to pass over Article 5, fiscal year 2024, appropriate funds to the other post-employment benefits liability trust.
Second.
Recommend the town meeting passing over Article 5.
So, so I have a motion and I have a, was that a second by you, Mr. O'Leary?
Sure.
Okay. Sure. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Article 6, appropriating funds to the stabilization fund. We do have a recommended transfer. This one, I think we're pretty firm that that's going to be the number at this point, right, Gloria? It's the capital one, it might change a little bit to the amount of source.
Right. $350,000 free cash.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 6, fiscal year 2024, appropriate funds to stabilization fund.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Mania Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Article 7, appropriating funds to the solid waste stabilization fund. In some years, we try to project out what the number will be that'll be left over and then make the transfer. In other years, we've just taken the number from the free cash and moved it in town meeting in October. Is that sort of what we're thinking for this one?
I talked to the DPW director. He prefers to wait, let it close out free cash and then do it fall.
So we have that as recommended town meeting, but it can be a passover.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article 7, fiscal year 2024, appropriate funds to solid waste stabilization.
I think you can recommend passover.
Okay. So I move to pass over Article 7, fiscal year 2024, appropriate funds to solid waste stabilization.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Mania Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Through you, Madam Chair, to the finance director. Do we do the same for eight? Do we decide, leave it, retain earnings or do we want to transfer them in?
We are willing to transfer them in because I think they're going to use water infrastructure stabilization for their other funding.
Okay, in the dollar amount?
$136,720.
So that would be recommended, right? So it may have sent a recommended town meeting, but it can be recommended.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 8, fiscal year 2024, appropriate funds to water stabilization fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Article 9.
Madam Chair, through you, the finance director. I believe we can also pass over nine. I've made that transfer already at this point. It's been some years that we haven't. We leave it on there in case things change, but I believe it's going to be a passover. So we could recommend passing over that article.
Madam Chair, I move to pass over Article 9, fiscal year 2024, appropriate funds to participate in the fund of energy and plumbing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
So you've already made a transfer this?
We have. We made the transfer in October from the funds that were left over from the prior fiscal year.
And we probably did the same thing in October.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Article 10.
Article 10, transferring funds to the school district reserve fund.
That will be a hundred thousand dollars from free cash.
You need to recommend them, sorry, yes.
Madam Chair, I would recommend a town meeting. Article 10 fiscal year 2024.
Just to recommend.
Recommending. Oh, sorry. Madam Chair, I would recommend fiscal year 2024 transfer funds to school district reserve fund for unanticipated budget costs for special education, out of district tuition, or transportation. Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary.
Is this the first year we're doing this?
No.
No, no. We've got, what, we've got three hundred thousand? What are we going to do now?
We have a surplus in this account.
We do. We've been putting a little bit away each year.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. I think it's three fifty.
About three fifty.
About three hundred and fifty? Good, all right.
That's what's in it.
Yes, that's what's in it.
This would be added to it.
Yep, that's great.
Do we need to add to it when they have such a surplus, though? We need it for other things?
How much is the addition?
Taking the free cash for this.
How much is it being transferred?
It's about three hundred and fifty thousand.
That's in it?
That's in it.
And what are we transferring?
A hundred.
A hundred?
It can be up to two percent of their net source funding.
But it's only for emergencies, so we're... I don't know.
Why don't two kids move into the district and wait it out pretty quickly? So I think it's a good idea.
That's not really an emergency, though. It's for extraordinary things they didn't anticipate.
Mr. Gilberto?
I think, you know, I thought long and hard about how to proceed with this, and I think with the possibility of a very tight budget in the schools, should we not have a favorable vote in the override, I think the feeling was having the funding there might prove to be really important later in the fiscal year. Future fiscal years, I think we're going to have to determine as things wash out how much we have to put into it. I think, were we still have that relatively healthy free cash number, at least for this year, we were comfortable making the transfer? I just don't know that we'll be able to in future years as things get really, really tight. So I think, for me, I looked at this as, okay, having this available, which by the way is under the control of the Select Board and the School Committee, a joint vote before it gets expended. Having it in case it's needed, you know, we could certainly, if that becomes the case, it would warrant a public discussion before it's spent. So I think we were comfortable with it because of that.
It doesn't come back out, though, once it's put over there. It's designated in that special fund and it stays there.
Until it's... Oh, I guess it could be transferred to town meeting, but really the procedure is for it to come to the Select Board. I believe the School Committee with an opinion solicited from the Finance Committee, I think that's how we ended up approving that, before it can be approved for use. They can't just be tapped into.
Mrs. Hurley? Yeah, I would like to say that this is a renewed use of the account. This is true, and the school department does the best money they can as far as spending increases. But you only need a couple of families moving in after the budget is reset that have fairly substantial, particularly out of district placements, family costs, which would eat that up very quickly. So I think that we would not be... We would be better off keeping money there rather than being concerned about how much we've already put in.
And that's what that fund is for?
Yes.
For a situation like that?
It's for unanticipated emergency costs for spend. And a lot of times, September, October, walls around budgets are even set by the schools and already anticipate what their needs are based on their current school bills. And suddenly, you have two or three other kids, some of whom may be able to enter into, you know, somewhat of a traditional classroom, but others that they have extenuating needs that require a lot of services. And this is where that kind of thing might play in.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I do worry about transferring our free cash into apartments just sitting there. So I do have to worry about that, and I think it's a valid concern to raise here, where we've done it and it's really not in use, and we could use it for other things. That's my concern. And we could always, you know, take it up during that time with the October town meetings and use some other funding to transfer into it. That's why I'm raising the issue. I understand these significant expenses, special education costs are to the school and unanticipated special education expenses. I'm concerned, though, about us shifting all of our free cash into this, and it's just not going anywhere, and we have other expenses that we're trying to cover. That's my concern.
I understand that.
So I'm going to ask a question that I think that you had asked, and I don't know if it got answered, that if it doesn't get used, are we able to take money out of that for other reasons other than what it's put in there for? Can it be moved from that?
Not under the procedure that's been established. I think it can be transferred.
It's a local acceptance. It's in the chapter and section that that's how it comes out, is Select Board and School Committee.
Does it make use of the transfer to town meeting?
It didn't say that in there.
Okay. So once it's in there, it may be stuck in there.
I was trying to find out if there was an upper limit.
Yeah.
That's what I looked at it today.
Won't get it for a while, though.
My thinking, like this year, and this is part of their issue with their 25 budget, they had a family move in that has three children. So they can plan for next year, but if it had been mid-year, and they have three children that need an out-of, you know, district placement, it does go fast. And so, you know, depending on where you are in the year, what you have left for free cash, or how you would fund that in a given year, that was, you know, my concern was listening to their explanation this year of what they ran into.
Can I ask, is there a specific cost for each child that needs? Or is it different for every child, depending on the service?
It varies depending upon.
It's a wild curve. Schools stress about this all the time because they throw a lot of things out, they recover very quickly. The interest, the transaction.
We have a motion.
Are you okay with that, Mrs. Manu?
We already read the motion.
We have a motion, so we have to hold it.
Oh, that was the discussion. I got lost in that, I'm sorry.
Got lost in the discussion.
So we have a motion, and I will assume a second by Mr. O'Leary because I don't remember.
You did, yeah.
And all in favor?
Aye.
We have an emergency. Should I shut the mic off? God, what is going on?
Through you, Madam Chair, Article 11, appropriating funding for the 20 Elm Street potential legal expenses. We do not foresee a need to make a transfer, but we keep this as a customary article in the event something does come up. So I think right now the recommendation would be to recommend a town meeting.
Madam Chair, I would recommend a town meeting. Article 11, fiscal year 2024 appropriate funds for the middle of expenses. Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Did you have any discussion on that article, Mr. Studo?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll put the mic back on.
Article 12. Twelve?
Yes.
Madam Chair, through you.
I'm not a good critters person, I'm sorry.
I apologize, Mrs. Manu Pelly. I thought we had whatever the issue is addressed first in this morning, but clearly we do Article 12, dissolve the 102104 Lower Road Regulatory Inspection Revolving Fund. This was a revolving fund that was set up to set aside permit revenue, permit fees, to cover the cost of inspections associated with 102104 Lower Road. We've done pretty well at controlling the costs of the inspections on the project, so there is a surplus available in the account. It's roughly 1.1 million dollars, and it's expected to grow slightly over the next fiscal year. We're proposing to close the fund because the project is winding down. We're proposing to use the proceeds in the fund to pay effectively cash for a fire engine in the capital plan that would be appropriated. Once these funds become part of free cash, we would then appropriate them at October town meeting. I think the strategy worked pretty well to isolate the funds.
Yes.
They are drying up, so they weren't necessarily one time, but their range of time they were coming in is limited. I think we would have liked to have purchased a ladder truck with them, given the height of the buildings, but that's a much more expensive proposition. So this was the next best thing to try to address, and I think it sort of works in our favor. By the way, additional revenue that comes in for permit fees in the project will go straight to the general fund as a revenue. We expect, I think we expect, if not by the end of the next fiscal year, the beginning of the following fiscal year, the construction will have completed, and we won't be receiving that revenue stream. But if we don't lose the funding, it just goes straight to the general fund now.
Okay.
And I think the recommendation was to recommend the article.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would recommend Article 12, dissolve 102104 Lower Road Revolving Fund. Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mrs. Manu Pelly?
This is a great example of locating, finding things, and shifting things. So I give you credit for doing that work for us. Otherwise, this could have just gone on and on and on, instead of us doing something a lot of proactively. So I appreciate that.
And in light of that, through you, Madam Chair, Mrs. Manu Pelly, this could have been something that became a debt exclusion project, given the cost.
Yeah.
So, I mean, right away avoiding having to go to the taxpayer to increase taxes to pay for this because of the funding source. So there's a huge impact, for sure. And credit to Gloria for identifying and bringing it up. Thank you.
All right, so any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, through you, Article 13, prior year bills. I don't know that we've identified any yet, but normally something shows up, so we hold it for recommendation at town meeting.
Madam Chair, would you recommend a town meeting? Article 13, prior year bills.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manu Pelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Article 14.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 14, select town officers is a routine article where those that are not selected by ballot are authorized and determined by the Select Board. The recommendation is to vote recommend.
Madam Chair, I would recommend Article 14, select town officers.
Okay. Did I get this? Is that... Oh, that was you? Okay. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manu Pelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 15.
Article 15, hear and act on reports of town officers. It's a routine article where we receive the report informing annual report. The recommendation is to vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, would you recommend Article 15, hear and act on reports of town officers and committees?
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manu Pelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 16.
Article 16, the operating budget on which we just had a hearing for the public to ask questions and address the board. Again, the annual operating budget for the town with a portion of which would be Proposition Two and a Half, override, funded, in the amount of roughly 2.8 million dollars is the proposal, and that's all that will be presented in the warrant. And the recommendation for the boards to vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, I would recommend Article 16, fiscal year 2025 operating budget.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manu Pelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, through you, Article 17, to increase the senior tax rebate program. We increased this at town meeting last year from 750 dollars to the then maximum 1,500 dollars. We're recommending that the board at great town meeting, a further increase under the increased level, under law, under state law, to go from 1,500 to the state law maximum 2,000 dollars. I will note, we are still required to provide compensation to participants at no more than minimum wage. So what that means is in order to achieve the additional savings off of the tax bill, the reduction of the tax bill, it's additional hours that need to be worked by participants. Those are the criteria and restrictions under state law, but we'll work our best to accommodate them. We did see a ticket participation last year. Some folks completed the whole program, others are in the middle of it. Some elected not to proceed with the opportunities that were out there because it didn't work out for them, or they just opted not to work. But we do have participation in the program, and we're looking to increase it to the extent allowed under law. I think our modeling under the budget for the overlay, you know, we are tighter in that projection, but I think we feel like we can absorb it at least in the current scenario and something that could be made available to reduce the burden on senior participants.
You said, do you have to work additional hours, or you could increase the hourly rate?
We cannot. Can't go above minimum wage. We can't go above, we should only pay them right now. And the recommendation was to vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, I would recommend Article 17, increase senior tax rate.
Second. I have a motion and a second from Mrs. Manu Pelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Madam Chair, before you proceed.
One second. Okay.
Okay. I'd like to switch my vote on the last one to abstain.
On the tax?
Senior tax.
Why are you qualifying?
Oh, I certainly qualify. But my wife, if they choose to participate, in that case, I will abstain. So please let the record show that I'm abstaining. Thank you.
Article 18.
Article 18 is the mean tested senior citizen property tax exemption. I think we've talked about it in prior meetings. I think we've seen a presentation for Mr. Warner with regard to eligibility. We certainly talk further about it if we need directly with the assessor, but she again is not available to be with us this evening, so we could go through the details at the hearing on May 20th. Folks want, the board wants to vote to recommend, it certainly could. They could hold off on recommending until after that discussion. I think probably the most significant thing that did come up since the presentation was that the increase allowed under the model that we're working on only goes, it's spread among amongst real estate property owners. It's not the whole tax base. So, you know, that's something I think at one point, I don't think we knew necessarily, but now that's been identified. So we've talked about whether or not you could classify the rate, you know, to spread it out. We talked to the assessor about that. It's a very difficult projection to make because you're really kind of trying to figure out who's going to participate, but it is an alternative that's there that could be done, if not in the first year, in a future year, once we have some history to work out. I'm going to ask, Gloria, is anything you want to share beyond that, or do we want to wait for that?
No, I think you've basically summed it up. It is just, well, from what she has told us, and I believe she called DOR and did some other research, it is only a residential shift. So if you could, even though we have a single tax rate, it could be that the residential tax rate increases a little bit above the commercial rate.
I would recommend that we hold off our recommendation until the hearing, when we can have the assessor here, but I'll pull the rest of the board for that. Would you like to hold off on your recommendation?
Yeah, I think it's important that we have the information.
I do, too.
Just so we can quantify it. We had information, there were about, what, 300 households that qualified for the senior shift, you know, circuit breaker. So maybe we'd get a little more information as far as quantifying exactly what the shift would look like, just so we'd be better informed, those getting better informed.
So we'll recommend a town meeting.
I think a lot of this presentation needs to focus on, it's not just granting an exemption. The amount exempted gets gifted over to remaining. So something that seemingly might be beneficial to one segment of senior citizens, the rest of the senior citizens that don't qualify for it are going to bear the burden of that just as every other resident is. So it's a balance. I think we would need to know, you know, if it... It is for the most financially eligible, obviously. It's far financially eligible, so I think it's helpful. But as a senior, as a presentation to help seniors, I'm not sure that it meets the mark in terms of that, because it's going to raise other seniors' taxes.
It raises everybody's.
Everybody, including.
Including theirs.
Yeah, so, but...
It's 10% of the seniors who benefit from it in town.
But the other 90% are going to see an increase.
As will everybody.
Everybody, but primarily this was intended to help seniors, I think.
It's intended to help those who are at the highest risk of being overhoused and moving out of our town, and we know what that means when that happens. So you're trying to create a little buffer for them.
So I think that we'll hold off, and we will recommend a town meeting. So I think that we'll hold off and we will recommend a town meeting.
Is it too late to put a new building in capital? Sorry.
Okay, I move to recommend a town meeting in Article 18, hold petition, establish mean tested senior citizen property tax exemptions.
We're going to recommend a town meeting.
Oh, we're going to, okay, I'm sorry.
So I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
The thing I would ask is, I understand, it sounds like there's a technicality, you have to always spread it among residential, but I don't think, I don't know if there's a way to also have the commercial people pay the same amount that residential would just like they are right now. So, I mean, that would be an adjustment, but it'd be a modest adjustment. It would be, otherwise the commercial people are going to be paying less than the residential are, and we'd never have that.
Right, so that would just be the tax classification hearing, this board could.
Just to tweak that.
You could adjust it to equalize.
Yeah, because I don't feel good about it not being still in the same at the end of the day. I don't think it's a small amount of money.
But to Mr. Gilberto's point, first year is going to be a guess, just a participation level with all the rest. Second year, you're going to start having a track record afterwards.
Yeah. We do have some trends. I mean, we do have some.
But the board would have an opportunity at the tax classification hearing to balance things out.
Yeah. All right, that's just a discussion point. I'm on the tax eight committee, I haven't heard any of this from like people in the committee, so I know the details, but I'll try to get us all together so this occurs as well. All right, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 19 is the one-time cost associated with fire department recruit and paramedic training, which we've talked about four firefighters, one for each group being hired. These costs would be available, be funded, they're proposed to be funded in an article so that they're available in the first year, but also in subsequent years because sometimes the training will lag, you know, from one year into another. We're interested in the dollar amount of funding source.
Okay, so from free cash, it'll be $340,084. And that's recruit training, physicals, turnout gear, all of that. And then from the ambulance reserve, it would be $164,323. That's for, if there's paramedic training, coverage, tuition. The attention is to hire paramedics, but they're not always available, so there is a portion that would be funded through the ambulance reserve for paramedic training. So the total on that is 504,407.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would to recommend Article 19, fiscal year 2025, one-time fire department recruit and paramedic training.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
It's important that we do this.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Article 20, fund retirement obligations. This is for our obligations for expenses associated with the retirement of employees, both school, municipal, we're in the dollars.
It's $85,000, and it's from free cash.
And the recommendation is to vote to recommend.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, would you recommend Article 20, fund retirement obligations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All set, Mrs. O'Leary? All in favor?
Aye.
Article 21, appropriating funds to other post-employment benefit liability trust fund. This is part of our annual financing plan for the town to be funded from reason appropriate, that dollar amount.
$425,000.
And that's been a 10-plus year funding plan that we've been on, but that. The recommendation is to vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, would you recommend Article 21, fiscal year 2025, appropriate funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Reason appropriate.
Reason appropriate.
And again, this is based upon the actuarial.
Yes, they don't really give us a funded plan. They basically said it's up to us, and then they use what we tell them to do their calculations. But this was in a revenue plan that I found, you know, when I took the position. So it seemed like it was something that was planned out by the town.
So the cost came.
It's gradually increased, and now it's $425,000.
So the model was for setting aside for new employees. That's the number that was given to us. We escalated over the years. I think we started 250, maybe, in 2014, and we've escalated it, not every year, but many years, and it's increased to this number.
Again, this was our attempt and effort to basically stop the bleeding on the OPEB liability, which keeps fluctuating, but in the millions of dollars. And if we can fund it as we go along from that point forward, at some point, we're even and we're paid off. To come up with 40, 60, or whatever the dollar amount is now, a million dollars is unrealistic. But what we tried to do here was to recognize on an annual basis what our anticipated costs were going to be from that point forward, and therefore not continue to add to the liability. So I just wanted to be sure that maybe at some point revisit with the actuary, see how we're doing as far as our best guess here. But this is far better than doing nothing. This is good.
Do we have a motion yet?
No, yes. Would you recommend?
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 22, this is.
From the last one?
Yeah.
We just voted.
No, I voted, but if we have this fund in place, why do we have to use $85,000 from the free cash? Why couldn't we have just used it for this? Because we've been putting money into it.
These are for, like, health insurance and different benefits after people retire. It's not to pay their, like, career end, it's more for as they collect after the fact.
Yes, all right.
Just to reduce our unfunded liability going forward.
Yes.
Later on, we won't have any unfunded liability.
That's a good, that's a good.
Good planning.
That makes sense, okay, thank you.
Article 22, I believe?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, authorizing the treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements. This is an annual article that we authorize the treasurer to work with the banks in the way that they are paid for their services, and the recommendation is to vote to recommend.
Okay, Madam Chair, would you recommend Article 22, authorize treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements?
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manu Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 23, rescinding authorizations to borrow. I don't think we have any specific identified at the moment, and I don't think we're expecting any, but for now, I would suggest a recommendation be made at town meeting, and assuming it continues in that trend, we would then change that to passover.
Madam Chair, I would to recommend a town meeting, Article 23, rescind authorization to borrow.
I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manu Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, through you, the next article is the annual capital plan article for the fiscal year 2025. I put the plan up on the screen there. I'm not trying to antagonize anybody by making it difficult to read, but it's in the packet. I'll try to zoom in a little bit. The projects are the same as what was discussed and what was presented by Mr. Kelleher on behalf of the capital improvement planning committee at the April 22nd meeting. There are a couple of changes we want to just identify. We had two projects that were only partially funded that we're able to fully fund. One is the portable radio units for the police department, and the other is for instructional technology equipment at the middle school and high school. So those were increased to $205,000 and $200,000 respectively, with the additional funding being free cash. We were able to, once a number of the other obligations came clear, we were able to identify these. So rather than have to come back and fund the second half of these projects in the next fiscal year, we're able to fund them in their entirety as they were requested this current fiscal year. So that certainly is a good position for us to be in. The second thing that I will just note is, just to make it clear, the Borrowes Road, the Chestnut Street, Culvert, and the Ladder Truck, those three projects are proposed to be funded, the debt service through the override. So the intention is to bring them to town meeting in October as an improved, as an article for approval for capital plan amendment contingent on the, assuming the favorable vote at the override on June 18th. If that does not materialize and the vote is not favorable, as I mentioned earlier, they would then be proposed as a debt exclusion funded project at the fall town meeting. We've talked to the departments, the timing works for us in terms of the authorization. We don't need to have the authorization in hand right now, they can be done in October. But I think the thinking is, knowing the landscape relative to an override better will help us plan for how to best fund these, but in either scenario, it's going to be above and beyond the tax, the existing tax levy. And then the third piece is the fire pumper that I mentioned earlier. So that account has to close, Orianna has to close that account out, get certified by the Department of Revenue as part of our free cash. We would then at the town meeting appropriate that $1.1 million toward the fire pumper as well. That's not contingent on the override, it's totally separate. And then the last piece, hoping we don't need it, but there is that $400,000 for the town center wastewater. We are not proposing it be funded in June, but if we do need it, we may be requesting that for funding in October. But again, we're projecting we will not need it at this point. So, Mr. Keller, did I do a decent job on that update?
Thank you.
Okay. So just wanted to identify all of that in terms of, you know, what's going to go in the warrant, and that's what's presented here. The biggest change being, you know, that we have additional funding to try to finish those two other projects.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would to recommend Article 24, fiscal year 2025, capital expenditures.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manu Kelly. Any further discussion?
I may offer an amendment at some point, just as no surprise. To a small portion of it, but I will be voting in favor to recommend.
Oh, someone did ask about that. That's the permanent traffic light at Central and Park.
Yes.
We did get an inquiry on making that permanent, so for anyone that's part, that's incorporated into this capital plan.
Yes, we got a letter from a resident saying that the entire neighborhood feels safer having it there.
Obligatory 10-minute discussion with the light.
Any further discussion?
No, but that's part of this.
Yes, I think it's a part of this. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 25, fund town building repairs. Through you, Orianna, it's $50,000 in free cash projected. It's a customary article that we have here for town building repair work. And the recommendation is to vote to recommend. It may say recommend at town meeting, it's to recommend though. Do you recommend?
Yes. Madam Chair, would you recommend Article 25, fiscal year 2025, fund town building repairs?
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manu Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 26, funding repairs to the Reverend Daniel Putnam House, a lot of mystery about this. I spoke directly with the, after talking to Mr. O'Leary, I talked directly with the source, Matthew Page, from the Antiquarian Historical Society. The Antiquarian Historical Society is proposing to do a significant amount of roof repair to the Daniel Putnam House. They are projecting a project cost of a little under $25,000. The recommendation I have is for it to be funded with $24,500 in free cash. They're looking for it specifically for the roof. My recommendation is that we leave it general for repairs because there may be other repairs that come up and need to be addressed to, on the building. And we'll be clear, there's a little bit of a procurement thing that we're going to have to work through because the previous grants we've given for that site have been under $10,000, which doesn't trigger any sort of a quote situation. So I think we can figure it out, and I relayed that to the Antiquarian Historical Society. What exactly that looks like, I'm not sure, but I don't think it should stop us from appropriating the funding if that's what we want. And to be clear, these are town-owned buildings. The property is in the care, custody, and control of the historical and antiquarian society through a, I believe it's a 20- or 25-year agreement that we're about 10 years into. But they are town buildings on town property, and I think they're asking for help with fairly major construction.
This is an emergency repair. The roof needs to be fixed.
Why are we taking $500 out if they are asking for $20,000? Why are we?
To be clear, it doesn't trigger a capital expenditure review, that's right.
Under $25,000.
Under $25,000, right. Their quotes are around.
I'm going to do the other $500.
They only need $22,500.
We believe it's going to be $22,500, but it's based on the verbal quotes at this particular point in time.
Great, Madam Chair, would you recommend Article 26, appropriate funds to repair Reverend Daniel Putnam House?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I think we already had discussion, but is there any further discussion? Mrs. Harlett?
Yeah, will you still flag all those?
$24,500. Yes. Sorry, Orianna, I talked to him like 6 o'clock tonight. Plus nine dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 28, authorize the director of public works to accept, nope, I stepped on 27, authorizing Chapter 90 highway construction. This is our annual allocation of Chapter 90 funding. It's simply an authorization for the Department of Public Works to spend it. Generally gets spent on road improvements in conjunction with a town road appropriation as well that's under the capital, the earlier capital article. And the recommendation is to vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, would you recommend Article 27, authorize Chapter 90 highway construction funds?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 28, authorizing the director of public works to accept easements, a routine article for mostly drainage-related easement acceptance, and the recommendation is to vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, would you recommend Article 28, authorize director of public works to accept easements?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 29, the lease of town-owned real property. So this would be to allow the town to enter into continuing lease for the existing cell tower at the Department of Public Works property for another term coming up. And it's something that we rely on as a funding source for the budget on an annual basis, $350,000, $300,000 in revenue we use each year, so it's an important tool and revenue stream for us, and my recommendation is that we vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, would you recommend lease of, I'm sorry, I'd move to recommend Article 29, lease of town-owned real property at 166 Chestnut Street?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, through you, I'm going to suggest that Articles 30, 31, and 32 be taken together in their vote. They are all related to the MBTA communities zoning. I think anyone who's been following along may know, this is something that the town, through its planning commission, has been working to comply with a state law that requires a multifamily housing by right, where somewhat fortunate that we have an area of town that's already been developed in accordance with this over at both Edgewood and Holte Homes in New England. This would demoralize the zoning requirements though, in order to get into compliance with the state requirement. And I believe by a vote of four to one, the planning commission submitted this article, and based on the work that's been done, my recommendation to the board is to vote to recommend.
Okay.
I think you can do all three in the same vote, I don't think people are going to vote differently on the different articles.
Madam Chair, would you recommend Article 30, amend code zoning bylaws, establishment of Lowell Road, multifamily zoning over Lake District? Article 31, amend code, changes to site plan review, Article, sorry, 17. And then Article 32, amend code zoning bylaws, section 200-30, zoning map, CVC.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second by Mrs. Manu Kelly. Any further discussion? I will be voting not to recommend, but that's my own rule. I think I made it pretty clear, not 100% comfortable with it, but. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Madam Chair, through you. Madam Chair, through you, got some great clarity between the hours in five and 9:00 AM on Saturday morning. Thank you for that.
Sorry.
No, that was perfect, perfect timing. So the, my understanding is that both the Veterans Events Committee, which has been formed by this body, and the Veterans Memorial Committee, which was established by town meeting in the, I think 1988 was the vote, have requested that both committees be consolidated into a single committee to be, the membership in charge of which to be determined by the select board at a future point in time. In order to allow that to happen, we're recommending that we go back to town meeting to dissolve the previous Veterans Memorial Committee. To be very clear, I think it's the intention of the work of that committee will still continue, but it would be absorbed in a committee appointed by the select board with the charge determined by the select board. And the action that's recommended is to vote to dissolve the Veterans Memorial Committee, and the, the recommendation is to vote to recommend.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 33, establish Veterans Committee, Veterans Event Committee, Veterans Memorial Committee.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Somebody better explain that, so it's not perceived as dissolving the Veterans Committee.
I, I can speak on, you mean at town meeting?
Yes.
Yes, I can speak on that.
Consolidate.
Consolidate, yeah.
Yes, right. But that's be undone by the town meeting vote.
Right. Because the memorials really are finished, other than there, there should be a Vietnam memorial at some point in the future. But really, the, the big work of that committee is done, and most of the members are no longer, they're not meeting anymore. So the one.
Excuse me, there's a Vietnam veterans up on the, up on the corner.
Is there?
Yeah, there is.
Oh, I didn't think, I thought that was one that we didn't have.
We have, on the corner.
Oh, maybe it was Desert Storm. I think that's what I was thinking, Desert Storm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But the, the Veterans Committee can do that.
The Veterans Committee, with the help, there's one member that was still willing to come on, and so he came on as an associate member with the Veterans Events Committee. Yeah, so he was the chair of the memorial committee. So, yeah, it basically is just consolidating. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Article 34, the last article on the warrant, fire station reconstruction project, biddy, bidding phasing.
We're getting tired.
Bidding phase funding. I, we can, can handle it in one of both ways. I can try to give a short update and answer any questions.
No, good as a law.
The public, the Public Works Director prepared a six-slide presentation that we could go through that provides more detail, because I do know folks in the community have had questions about the project.
Yeah.
We certainly want to keep it out there, so.
Okay.
If you, folks would like, we'll go through that presentation. He is, he is virtually attending the meeting, so thank you, Joe, for being here. You want me to share that presentation? We'll go through it.
Does the board, would the board like the presentation?
Yes, I think so.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Joe, can you hear us all right?
We can't hear you.
Oh, can you turn the volume up a little?
Yeah, I can hear him faintly.
Yeah, we can hear you trying.
Loud and clear.
There you are.
There you are. Now we can hear loud and clear. Our volume was turned down. I'm going to share my screen, and I'll just take your cues to, to move the slides along, Joe, if that's all right?
That'd be fine.
Can you see the screen? Do you see the presentation, Joe?
I can see it.
Great, awesome. All right, take it away, Joe.
All right, so I just wanted to prepare a few slides that show the phases of the project, the cost updates and funding requests for the bidding phase services. We, we are basically looking to keep the project moving forward as far as being able to, you know, have a, a certain number from general contractor bidding. When we get to the point of an October town meeting, where we hope to have an article for the funding of the fire station renovations project. If you can move to the next slide. So the phases of the project, the facilities master plan study really was the beginning of looking at a number of buildings that was in November of 2021. The fire station was certainly among them. And on April 2022, the fire station structural analysis was performed as discussion was leading towards the reconstruction of that building. So we wanted to see if the capacity was there, the structural capacity was there of the existing building for expansion considerations. And in June of 2022, conceptual design to develop high-level cost estimates was also performed. As the project continued to move forward, funding was appropriated and additional funding was obtained from fire station schematic design and supplemental services. So March 2023, refinement of conceptual drawings and review of mechanical systems, progress to schematic design plans verifying that the spatial relationships will support the department operations. Supplemental services for data gathering, you know, site survey, delineation to your technical information, and soil testing was also performed. And a refinement of the high-level cost estimate of a, of a more detailed cost estimate. Move the slide. So the, the stage we are basically in now is the final, the fire station design development and construction documents. So design development includes the sizing of the structural elements and the structural draw, for structural drawings needed for building expansion, development of mechanical, electrical plumbing, the fire protection plan, both be coordinated and incorporated into the architectural design elements. The project cost estimate was further refined and more detailed, material quantities known, and basically the project's cost is more definitive. And the project design drawings and specifications will be created and incorporated into a construction document package that are ready for use as potential project bid documents. Will the decision is made to fund the project in solicitor contract bids. Move the slide. So I want to give a little update on the costs of the project phase cost update, includes the facilities master plan study, the original, I guess, study for the fire station project. So that had been $70,000 for all of the buildings, but some of it was certain for the fire station. There's a balance of $67,725 for basically other buildings that they get to get to. Structural analysis and cost estimate for the fire station, that was at a cost of $20,266. We have a balance of $10,374. Fire station schematic design and supplemental services, the schematic design was $187,672 with a balance, current balance of $12,500. Supplemental services, $106,141, with a balance of $35,651. We are currently at the fire station, we design about the construction phase. It was $360,001.06 for the purchase order cost amount, and we, we have a balance of $269,708. Construction documents, $420,960. We have yet to be invoiced for that. Now, with all that said, talking with HKT Architects, all of the work is substantially done. They are a little bit behind on the building, they have some new software that they're implementing, but we believe by the end of June, all of these amounts will be fully built. They're about 98% done with the construction documents. So we're very close to being able to, you know, really have documents in here, do some additional review. I know the building inspector wanted to do some thorough review on that, so we'll take a closer look on the, on the construction documents very, very shortly. Slide.
Can I ask a question about that slide? Just a quick question on this slide.
Yes, please.
To, Joe, what are the, what are the supplemental, what are the supplemental services that that 106, 141 is for?
So essentially, supplemental services are bringing in other expertise, other firms to do such as geotechnical services, survey, soil moorings, things of that nature, that gather data for the project design.
And, and there's a, if you can do this briefly, there's a question between the schematic design and the design development and construction. Can you just give us a quick explanation of the difference between those?
Between schematic design and, and the design development?
Yes.
Sure, yeah, so schematic design basically is gathering, you know, you're advancing from what we previously had, which was just conceptual, you know, sketches, drawings, what have you, but really gathering some, some very detailed information from, you know, the fire department, the fire chief, any information that can be gathered from the space itself, measurements, and understanding of the chemicals, that's not to build on, you know, design plans, you know, that really test, you know, what the, what the concepts are, what the concepts were, and put that into sort of a progressive set of drawings that can be developed over time to get to a point where we know things are fit, they're going to fit, they're going to work for the operations. When you get into design development, you're really getting into, you know, all of the, the very detailed specifications and drawing sets to develop the final, the final plan for the project. You're gathering data probably in, maybe in both situations, but you're much further along, and you're able to get into a sort of cost estimating for a more refined and detailed set of drawings.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question about this slide? So, am I doing my math right? Are we like 800,000 into this? Yeah, there.
Eighty thousand, in the, the design and development construction documents contract that we're working on right now, we certainly had, there was 200, let's just say, close to $300,000 for the schematic design.
Yeah.
And some additional funding for the structural analysis, $20,000, and some portion of that, $170,000.
And then you have balances. What are those, so, like, each one has a balance that was?
Right, so the, the facilities master plan balance would, would be for other remaining buildings, so that wouldn't.
Okay, so this is money that was.
Yeah.
Yeah, appropriated for all the buildings.
Yeah, so that's the balance that that'll, that'll be built out as the other buildings get addressed to the study. The structural analysis and cost estimate, that's going to be built out shortly. All of this will be built out by June. None of these balances are going to be expended, that they all, they will all be built out in accordance to the contract. There might be some small amounts in supplemental services that we may not have, have done, but it's a small portion of the balances remaining.
Okay, anyone else?
Joe, can I ask one more question? You have these contracts, so you're making sure they're coming in under the, you know, for what they, what the contract applies to. The services that they're providing are coming in on bid, on or on the bid, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, Joe?
Yes.
Phase services, so the HKT have provided, provided a scope for bidding phase services that includes preparation of the bid package, a pre-bid walkthrough with bidders, requalification of the bidders. This project will require that we really qualify the contractors, that they have the ability to do this type of work, or the magnitude of the work, the cost of the work. And so that is an effort that is usually performed by a, a, a small group or number of people from probably the building committees and architects, engineers, OPM, to, to really look at all of the bidders and qualify them before, before they bid. There's also meeting time with select one building committee. And finally, HKT will review the bid and prepare a letter of recommendation for the little bid award. We also have to do a little bit of design and bid services for temporary facilities, although we don't know exactly where that's going to be yet. We understand, you know, there's a need for certain temporary shelters for the equipment, temporary housing for staff, the final, and also some office space, kitchen space, things of that nature. So we, we do need to provide some, a month, time and effort for, you know, some site investigation once that site is determined, and sort of do a layout of the temporary facilities that meets the department's needs. And we have to create construction documents for bidding so that the, the general contractor, you know, can incorporate that price into his bidding call. There, there may be some things that the town should be procuring in advance if they're long lead items, or could shorten the timeframe that is going to be needed to set up temporary facilities, because the construction can't happen until, you know, they're operational elsewhere. So for the most part, though, the contractor would want to put that service, or, or that work is, in his contract so that he's totally responsible for getting all of that done before he, you know, starts the construction. He might be able to do a few things, but predominantly he has to, the company has to do that work ahead of time before construction or demolition permission begins with the fire station project. There's also online bid services for bid submissions and tabulation. So basically, you know, there are services out there that collect all the bids that are submitted and tabulate that all and develop spreadsheets for review and determination of the little bit. And just some bid phase contingency would be needed as well, again, to determine, you know, if there's other things we should be doing to move this along, to ensure we have everything we need to have bids in here for a close town meeting. So, next slide. And estimate for other items, a SAG 44,200, HKT bidding phase services. Now, budget only, $75,000. We hope to, once we're in the deal with facilities are, if they are in a deal with that, maybe, but we take the $75,000 budget number is appropriate at this time. So for the online bid services, $7,600, and bid phase contingency, $30,000. The OPM services, we have a contract with Perplex. The OPM services, we have a contract with Vortex. They're basically under contract till June 30th for roughly a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We have not utilized a significant amount of that, so we believe that Vortex has verified that their contract, their current budget balance is sufficient to get those through the bidding phase, so there's no additional cost for that. So total cost of the bid phase is looking to be a hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred. There is available prior appropriations for the OPM and design services. You may recall, came to you probably in January, so I guess, we were able to appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards both OPM services and additional design services. So we do have an uncovered balance of eighty-three thousand eight hundred. So, you know, this brings, say, the cost down or the request down to seventy-five thousand dollars for project bidding phase services. So if there are any questions, I'll try to answer those as well.
No, no questions, Joe.
Free cash? It'd be funded from free cash, that's correct.
So it says request of seventy-five thousand.
Correct. There was a question in the chat, Madam Chair, I don't know if you want to entertain it.
Okay.
I know it's not a hearing, but it looks like it's only one question. The question was...
Did they give their name and...
Yes, Nick Massey was the name. What's the percent of cost for temporary construction? And Joe, I'm not sure if we have that number at this point based on where we're at in the design planning, but to what extent can that be answered?
Are they referring to where they'll go?
Yeah, temporary, temporary location.
I think, I know it's slight, it's probably a million dollars more and more for temporary facilities on a twenty-three million dollar project.
Okay. That's a budget level estimate right now, it's not...
That, if my recollection is correct, on, you know, what was plugged in for temporary facilities. I do believe that, as we understand, you know, more needs of temporary facilities, that number may be refined and it probably would be a little bit more than that. But, I mean, that's approximately what it is in regards to the whole project cost of about twenty-three million.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, I think Nick Massey's asking something similar that I'm asking for as well. Once you get this far in town meeting, I think it's only going to be natural. People are going to want to know what's next. So I think there should be a slide, and maybe you can tell me why we shouldn't do that, but it immediately sets off, like, okay, how big is this project? What's the timeline? You know, where are we going with this? And I don't think anybody, I know it, because I'm aware of it, but I doubt that town knows it. So you're going to have a lot of, I suspect you're going to have a lot of questions at town meeting about that. So let's tell them ahead of time, so that way at least you get it out there, because I think that's coming up next.
Are you talking about June?
Mrs. Haraldt.
Or October? If this motion is passed and we get seventy-five thousand dollars to complete bidding phase, et cetera, stuff is on next slide.
Yep.
Then we would then go out and get bids for contractors, select a contractor with the caveat that you don't get to build the fire station once it passes our October town meeting. We then go into our October town meeting with a bid in hand with an exact number of what's needed to do the renovation of the fire station. And as soon as that is completed, then work will begin at moving the fire station to a swing space and start the renovation project. The renovation project, once construction starts, will probably take twelve to fourteen months. That's the OPM's current estimate.
So that's, I think that type of information should be shared.
Yeah, well, it will be.
Well, I don't see this...
At this...
At June.
What's that?
Yeah, the June town meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, at June town meeting.
Yeah, at June town meeting, we have some new drawings of the floor plan and the elevations in the building, up-to-date ones. Those will be available both on the screen as well as in the hallway at town meeting. I've already sent copies of it to the transcript last week. The transcripts editor had talked about the possibility of doing this drawing this week in the transcript, but I don't know that that's going to be possible. So, yeah, there's lots of, you know, we give this information fairly regularly. But this particular phase is important, because this ties the whole project together, gives us a firm number with a contractor to go into our October town meeting, so there's not a lot of guesswork or second guessing at that point.
Mr. Studo.
The construction drawings have pretty much been completed, and they've been sent out to the cost estimators. There's two sets of estimators, one that works for the OPM, the one that works for the architect. And those estimates and the completed sets of construction drawings should be ready sometime later this week.
Mr. Studo.
Thank you. I'd also like to know that, speaking from working on an experience on a project that's a few dollars more than this, with this request to get the total information, the issue, and I just caution for whatever's going to be added, the issue with presenting too much info without all the info can be detrimental to the final project. Meaning that if you can't answer specifics, which we will not have, that is enough for those that are in, of the never spend a dollar ever again. That's all someone is going to need, that we couldn't answer a specific question on a specific dollar amount because we weren't prepared. So I just caution that if we don't have all the info, I would not present a presentation that is trying to answer that. And I know what you're trying to say.
I'm not asking.
Oh, I know that, Mr. Wallner, but I'm saying that that's how... But if that one slide doesn't have every particular thing on every single what-if known to man, and someone says then, hey, that's why we need this last seventy-five thousand, that is, I'm just saying, that's, I have a prime example of where that backfires spectacularly. And I, and it could, that's the only note of caution I say, because I don't think we have all the answers. And to Mrs. Haraldt's point, this last seventy-five thousand gets us out to get those actual costs.
No, I understand.
And because it will be contingent on town meeting, it can be like, hey, we now have this. So now if you're going to ask me what you think it's going to be, I can actually say. Where in June, we might be saying, we don't have that number yet. And then it'll be like, you're hiding the number. I will guarantee you, within forty-eight hours, the Facebook warriors will say the number's being hidden by somebody here. So just, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
The issue is, though, that this has to come to June show meeting to get appropriated.
This part.
This part, but I think on Mr. Wallner's point, just what Mrs. Haraldt just explained, I think, needs to be explained. We don't have to get specific, we don't have, because we can't.
Conceptual.
But, but next steps, and exactly what you said, is just what...
Oh, I agree, I'm just saying, just to make clear, though, that, hey, there's probably numbers that everybody would like to know, but we just don't have.
I'm not even necessarily talking numbers, I'm just talking...
It's kind of become that on Mr. Wallner.
Why are we doing the project? What's the benefit? You know, is it too...
I think we've talked about that for a number of years.
But, but it's going to be...
We always talk about it again and again.
At town meeting, what I'm saying is at town meeting for half, if not more than half, it'll be the first time.
It'll be fresh, yes.
Right, no matter how much you've tried.
But even though, even though it has been explained over and over again, in the past few weeks, what's come up is, and some of our meetings where you've been at is, why are we spending all that money to retrofit or renovate the existing building when we could be building a new one? So I think the question about what the temporary facilities are going to cost, added into the cost of retrofitting and renovating the existing building is what's on people's minds right now, based on the cost of the project. So I think it's a, in other words, we've heard and we know and we've heard this over and over explanation, but that's a question that's being asked. So that somehow has to be covered, why? We've looked at other sites, we've looked at what's feasible, this is what's feasible, the cost is comparable.
It's actually probably less.
And/or less, yeah.
But, I mean, when you're talking about this size project, what's less?
Well, and also that...
The biggest problem is there's no central available land that either the town owns or is for sale.
And there's some implements to this that are missing, that the hazmat, the cleaning station.
Yeah, no, we always have that on the display boards, and we always talk about it.
Yeah, I know you do, but it's fresh, like Mr. Wallner says, it's new for some people right now.
No, I agree.
So those kind of bullet points, maybe.
Just to...
And the other piece of it is that the fire chief had been working on a video of existing conditions and the need for to modernize and do that renovation of the fire station. I asked him two days ago where that project was, because he apparently has, knows somebody that does those kinds of videos. And I haven't gotten an answer yet, but the idea is to put that on the town website and perhaps on the community connection, and that just adds to...
Explanation, yeah. It's a good idea.
I agree with you, Mr. Wallner, I agree it has to be more, but just, just be aware that no matter how concise, limited, keeping it in a certain scope you think it's going to be, just now, just a couple of tidbits that you brought up, you almost went down a rabbit hole that would have been a forty-minute conversation. And I'm saying, when you go to town meeting...
Like now?
It's going to happen, yes, but it's going to be, because now the expectation is, well, okay, we open the box, we're going to talk about what this box means. So it's not just going to, it's not going to become about this. So I'm just saying that I'm happy, I'm not spearheading this one. Whoever is, be prepared to talk in full detail, whether you have the details or not.
No, Mr. Studo, if you go back, though, to a couple of slides, to the first portion of this, it would, that one right there, the other one, the next one. The facilities master plan study, this has been studied, those, that's why it's old news.
But that's what I mean, this is old news, and we're talking about future.
But it should be, we should, like Mr. Wallner's point is that, you know, this study's been happened a while ago, so it's not, so those issues were looked at.
I always assume that people are coming to this basically new and don't know anything.
Yes, right.
That's my point.
Absolutely.
And that seems to work, for those that listen.
Right.
And then you get some of the slightly more bizarre questions, which I will point to.
Yes. But it was looked at, studied, in other words, for the proper location and other locations.
There are a lot of choices in this life.
I remember that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
And I mean, I would welcome anybody on board or anywhere else in the world.
Anywhere in the world?
Be careful what you ask.
I don't think they're going to be that excited about it. I mean, I'm very available, you know, send me a text, send me an email and say, I think you should include X, Y, or Z, I don't know, it's a simple problem with that. Or whoever, I mean, I typically end up speaking at town meeting, but, you know, maybe, maybe I'll be saved. Maybe it will be along the line of people that are doing it. But seriously...
I doubt it, but...
I don't own this. I don't own this chit-chatting town meeting, and this is a community thing and, you know, a bunch of different communities and people that work extraordinarily hard on the noise coming in.
But you do have all the knowledge of it.
No, I have quite a bit.
So you would be probably the best person to answer most of the questions.
Probably more than I ever wanted to have.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Ferraro, was that the end?
That is the end.
Okay.
That's great, good.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Joe, and there was a recommend... Yeah, thanks, Joe.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
There was a recommendation to recommend the town meeting, but we do have the dollar amount now, so if the board is willing to consider it, I would suggest a revote to recommend.
Madam Chair, would you recommend Article 34 Fire Station Reconstruction Project Bidding Phase Funding Facilities Master Plan Fire Station Building?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wallner and a second by Mrs. Mandy Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That wraps up...
That's it, it was only thirty-four?
That wraps up the...
I mean, what kind of, that's it?
Nothing?
Review discussion. We can move on to the meeting then.
Can we, can we do this minutes?
Joe, have a good night.
Thank you, Joe.
Bye.
Thank you.
Can we do the minutes?
Thank you.
I have an amendment.
Can you check the permission to probably do the minutes?
No. Are we on the table, though?
No.
We worked hard on those minutes.
No.
Madam Chair, would you approve the regular session minutes for the March 4th, 2023 meeting?
Okay.
I hope. I have a motion and a second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussion?
Just one piece of this, in terms of the appointments on that evening with Mr. Ferraro, it references me as saying I'm opposed to appointing for only one year. We did get into a dialogue about that, that I think is important to add, and that's because I would, what the board was informed was, Mr. Ferraro asked for only one year. I was in favor of appointing him to the full term. So I think it should reflect a little bit more of that versus appearing as though I was opposed to him being appointed.
I didn't read, I didn't read it that way.
Well, you were here, that's why, but someone that wasn't here wouldn't read it the same way as we read it, so...
We should have that clarification, I guess.
I would ask, yes.
As amended?
Yes.
As amended.
Second.
On the amendment first, I think, I'd move to amend it.
Okay, so I had a move, I had a move to amend, and I have a second by Mr. Studo.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion approved as amended.
For the March 4th, 2023 meeting, as amended.
Second.
You have a motion and a second by Mrs. Mandy Kelly. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Okay, Madam Chair, would you approve regular session minutes for the March 13th, 2024 meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Mandy Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, would you approve regular session minutes for the March 18th, 2024 meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Mandy Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Our next agenda item is the Town Administrator's Employment Agreement. We will, we have not concluded our negotiations, so we will be tabled that. Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're going to be there all day tomorrow.
I'll skip over the comment about the bond rating, because I did speak to that during an earlier agenda item. Pleased to report that the Department of Public Works is establishing a curb site mattress collection program that will begin soon. I've signed a contract with UTEC Incorporated to perform the service, and more information will be available in the coming weeks for how residents can access this. There will be a fee for it, it's likely to be paid directly to the disposal company, but this will avoid folks having to reach out on their own if I had a third party. There's somebody that's already going to be in town, that hopefully there'll be a little bit of a volume discount from, but there will be a fee associated with it.
I will probably partake in that.
Mrs. McNeil, has gathered recently released information from the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, which I had attached to my report. We do expect to be back before the potential applications for seasonal outdoor expansion at the next meeting.
applications for seasonal outdoor expansion at the next meeting. Haven't had a ton of interest in the past couple of years, there was a lot of interest at one point early on, but we're still working through that, but we wanted you to have that information at the same time while we're reviewing it. Pleased to report that the Department of Public Works is working with a contractor to begin construction at the North and Central Street Intersections. It's the first of the two intersections we've done this construction season, the other is Havil and Chestnut. North and Central, depending upon the timing for delivery and availability of frantic curbing, which I believe is the last product that's in question, they're looking at the next two to three weeks of getting started, so work is really going to begin to pick up in that area to get that project done. Havil and Chestnut is a little bit later in June, we're looking to get that project started as well. So definitely happy to be able to get those projects both moving. Finally, I think folks are aware, but if they are not, the third meeting house is going to close to the public for a renovation project, it's a flooring project that is, that has been actually funded with a state grant. It'll be closed for a couple of weeks, reopening the Tuesday after Memorial Day. During closure, services will be offered at Out of August Street Church, or continuing that partnership that we have with them. The office will be located here in Town Hall, in room ten, which is in the back wing behind the Public Services Office. The phone number will be the same, the email contact information will be the same, so if folks want to reach out in that fashion, they will be able to reach everybody, you know, in that fashion. There's also some programming that's going to be taking place at some Masonic temples, so we certainly appreciate their partnership as well when we go through this improvement. So certainly ask folks to bear with us, there will be some impacts, but we'll end up with a better, or I should say, improved facility afterwards. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
I'm just going to clarify, you said the third meeting house, I'm just going to clarify that it's the senior center.
Yes, same building, yes.
Yeah, just for some people that...
Yes, it is the senior center, that's correct.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would adjourn.
Second.
It was the second? Did you want to stay? I have a motion to adjourn and a second by Mrs. Mandy Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.